All right, good evening. We will call this meeting to order for the February 13th, 2025, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. Welcome, everyone. For any members of the audience who have signed up to speak this evening, when your aim is called, please approach the podium to address the council. And with that, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public voice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda, to approve the agenda, and Tom, any changes this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have no changes to the agenda.
No changes. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Grendal, a second by Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda carries. The next item is our audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. I'm looking at Christina because I did not check the signup sheet. She says no one signed up. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak who maybe did not sign up? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. Councilmembers, any items you would like to pull from consent? All right, anyone in the audience? All right, we have a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Melander, a second from Councilmember Hebert. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Consent items passed. Leads us to our regular agenda and item 5A, and our Fire Chief Matt Nelson's going to come up and talk about a award we recently received for the construction project of Fire Station 2.
I didn't receive it, the city did. But welcome, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I'm going to turn it over to Ben Newen here from Terra Construction. You can explain a little bit more about the award.
Thanks, Matt. Mayor, council members, the Minnesota Construction Association is an association specifically for Minnesota construction projects. Every year, they host a Awards of Excellence Gala. On that gala, they have a number of different categories you can submit and nominate projects for. Project categories are those under $5 million, over $5 million, publicly funded renovations, additions, and then tenant interiors. And so we nominated the Station 2 under the publicly funded project. And about six weeks ago, we were notified the project won. And just a few weeks ago, we attended the award ceremony on behalf of the city to accept this award. And so we're here today to present the award to the city. And prior to turning it over, I would just, I want to turn it over to Anya Beck. Anya has been our project manager for this project, really spearheaded the project from a cost perspective management perspective, coordinating with the city. And that's one of the things that the award criteria was for, collaboration, cost management, schedule management, quality, safety, innovation, the ability to work together as a team, which this project really did exemplify. And so thank you for your dedication to this team, and thank you to the city for your partnership. Anya?
Anya, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. So I just wanted to recognize what makes this a successful project is the partnership, actually, and this project was really enjoyable, even though, like any project, we encountered challenges. But with the Fire Department, the administrative staff, and particularly Charles Grau, he was just amazing. So it was a really good project. And CNH and myself actually have a history in the fire station side of things, too. So that was really enjoyable. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I look forward to additional projects and actually have stuff going on for the parks. So really enjoy working with Apple Valley, and we'll be here till 2027. So hopefully, we can win some more. So thank you, and we just wanted to present this. So can we bring this up to you guys?
Yeah, Glenn, we're gonna, we'll set it up here. Thank you. Thank you.
Well done, project.
So the audience can see it, those who have good eyes, anyway.
This tempered glass, it won't break.
All right, Charles, did you want to try to get a picture?
Charles, you're supposed to be in it.
The challenge is, I need you in the picture, Charles. So Tom is going to have to...
How many project manager projects have you done, Charles?
We want to get maybe you guys in the front. We can just stand up, and maybe we can move in here, and we can be just behind. Maybe that'll give us enough height that we can...
I don't sit down, I miss the chair.
I've done that.
Everybody, me?
Me, Charles.
Make sure you see the cameras.
All right, look good. One, two, three, one, two. Perfect.
He's way up there. Your last project. Thank you, thanks. Matt, thanks, everybody.
We're about knocking it over. Thanks. Thank you all. Thanks for coming out tonight, too. All right, our next item, 5B, is to appoint a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee member. And Christina, we have a process. I know we have a number of our applicants here in the audience tonight as well, which is great to see people come up for this. So you want to walk us through this voting process and all those good things?
Yes, mayor and council, this is always very exciting how many people are excited to be a part of the city of Apple Valley. So we had a, or have, I should say, one vacancy on our Parks and Recreation Committee. That vacancy is for a one-year term. It expires on March 1st of 2026, and it is the result of Councilmember Hebert, who is on the Parks and Recreation Committee, being elected to serve at the city council. So we began recruitment for this position early in 2025. Applications closed on January 29th, and we are excited to say we had eight applicants for the vacancy. The council received the names of all the applicants and the applications under separate cover, and in your packet, you do have a list of all of those applicants as well. The process this evening, first, the council will formally accept the nominations. We typically would have one council member read off those names, and then the mayor would call for any other nominations, and then the nominations are closed. And then our typical process is a balloting process where we have, because I'm a city clerk, I have ballots for everybody with the candidate's name on there. And each council member initials the bottom of the ballot, so we know how you voted. And then you would typically vote for one fewer candidate than we have. So we currently have eight, so you would vote for seven, up to seven. And then I collect those ballots, and the city attorney and I go out and count those ballots, and then we come back with the results. A candidate needs at least three votes from councils in order to move forward in the process. So then I come back with another round of ballots. I remove any of the candidates who didn't receive that vote threshold, and then we continue on with that process until we are down to one candidate who has received a majority of council votes. And then there's a resolution that the council moves to formally appoint that person. Any questions on that? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that detailed explanation. Councilmember Grendal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would put all the names into nomination. I think we have some great people who have applied for the position. But I'm going to make a motion, we vote for five on the first ballot.
So three less?
Three less.
Same math, just want to make sure everybody understands. Somebody's thinking it's confusing, right? We only have all the numbers.
We vote for five.
Vote for five. We'll give that a shot for the first one. We can adjust as we move into fewer numbers. So any other, we seem to ask, are there any other nominations, I believe, at this point? Is that would be typical? Looking at the audience, one more opportunity. Are there any other nominations? Why is that hard to say this evening? One final time, any other nominations? If not, we have a motion from Councilmember Grendal to advance the slate as is presented in the council materials this evening. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So I think we're ready to begin our balloting.
And you should each have ten that you're stationed, or you can use whichever photograph it is.
Vote for five.
Mr. Mayor, we should probably advance a motion to vote for the number that you wish to vote for. The established resolution is one fewer, if you wish to vote for that.
That was actually included in Ruth's original, or excuse me, Councilmember Grendal's original motion.
Okay, if that was...
Advancing the slate and first five.
And you were good with it on your second?
Yes.
And we're all good with that? So the minutes can reflect that accordingly?
They already do.
So refresh, we're voting for five.
Vote for five. Thank you.
Did we need to read the slate of candidates, too? Okay, okay.
And then please make sure you read your initial ballots.
Thank you.
The city attorney and I will tally the vote. In the meantime, I believe that...
Yes, we have some updates to go through. So Tom, while we, this is like cold music, but better. So go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, we have a number of staff updates for you, and we're going to start, actually, with a communication that we have been using here called The Vibe, produced regularly by our communications team. We want to show you a more recent version that actually includes some timely updates on some community items. If they happen to come in before we're done with the video, we'll just pause it, and we'll pick it up once we're into round two.
Exciting projects from the 2023 Parks Referendum are well underway, and you can expect to see some amazing changes in 2025. This spring, we're breaking ground on a brand-new youth baseball and softball complex at Hayes Park, and we're also kicking off the reconstruction of Redwood Park. Then, as we move into summer, work will begin at Kelly Park and on rebranding the trail at Cobblestone Lake Park. But that's not all. Johnny Cake Ridge Park is set for some major improvements this summer as well. The newly remodeled Apple Valley Family Aquatic Center will celebrate its grand reopening. We'll also start construction on eight additional pickleball courts, along with the state-of-the-art concrete skate park. In addition to these exciting projects, our neighborhood parks are also getting some well-deserved upgrades. Throughout 2025, we'll be installing new park signs and replacing features. Stay tuned for more details as these projects progress. For more information, visit applevalleymn.gov/parksprojects. The Apple Valley Senior Center offers a variety of activities for seniors. One of the most popular programs is morning stretch. This program is a great way to get moving and start your day feeling energized and refreshed. Sessions are held every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. For more information on senior stretch and other activities, visit applevalleymn.gov/seniorcenter. You can also stop by during the daytime for a tour of the facility. Dakota County is hosting a fix-it clinic on Saturday, February 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Galaxy Library. Residents are encouraged to bring up to three small household items, such as electronics, clothing, or jewelry for free repair assistance. Skilled volunteers will guide participants through troubleshooting and fixing their items. No registration is required, and items are accepted until 12:30 p.m. For more information and future dates, visit the Dakota County website. And finally, a reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of the President's Day holiday. That's the latest vibe in Apple Valley. Stay up to date by checking out our website and following us on social media.
Well done, as always. So it seems like our timing is perfect here. They were waiting outside the window for the video to end.
That new lawyer.
Not interrupting anybody's presentation, that's great.
Perfect.
Mayor and council, after our first round of balloting, we have six continuing candidates. Those are Cindy Dais, Nicole Farrelly, Angela Lauer Shappy, thank you. As a scipione, I should get it right, right? Patrick Luke, Jessica Merchant, and Hunter Verah. So at this point, you will be voting for one fewer, so we have six continuing, so it's five votes again. And then I will hand out the ballots, and you'll make your selections. Remember to put your initial ballots.
Do we have a motion to vote for four?
Is there any issue with that? We vote for four?
It's a motion.
Yeah, so the motion to vote for, the math will still work, right? It should still work fine. So motion from Councilmember Grendal to vote for four this round, a second from Councilmember Melander. All in favor of voting for four? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll vote for four.
Next one we'd like to do is another video with a brand-new announcement for the community. This is for the first time, the show's, and it will be very much public after this. So we'll ask Tim to roll the next video.
I'm really excited about this big announcement. Let's pick this up after lunch. But until then, let's make sure we keep all of this information confidential.
Got it.
Hey, team, I hope you guys had a great lunch. Hey, everybody. Hey, chief, what's up? Did you hear the news? The Apple Valley Family Aquatic Center is now called Splash Valley Water Park. Oh, great. Whatever happened to keeping this confidential?
I don't know.
The secret's out. The Apple Valley Family Aquatic Center is now Splash Valley Water Park. And it's more than just a new name. Discover all the exciting new improvements at applevalleymn.gov/splashvalley. I can't wait for summer.
They didn't archive that.
Yeah, we thought that was buried, didn't we?
Show up again and again and again.
So just the backstory on that, the last cannonball to be performed at the old Redwood Pool was done by our police chief, and you just saw the video evidence of that. And I believe the plans are in the works for when the new pool is in, that you're going to kick that off as well? All right, we have a plan. Next up, we'd like to call on our fire chief. He has an announcement for the community as well. Matt Nelson.
A little ways out, but get people kind of thinking about it. Our Fire Department will be accepting applications for paid-on-call firefighters in the month of April. So you don't need to have any training to apply. You just need to be 18 years of age or older, have a high school diploma or GED, live within four minutes of one of our fire stations, and have a driver's license. And then we'll do the rest as far as training people if they're selected to move forward in the process. So just wanted to get people kind of thinking about that, and you can find more information on our website about that as well.
Thank you, chief. Councilmember Grendal.
Chief, can you explain how the four minutes works? National night out, somebody said they couldn't make it in the four minutes, and I thought they lived relatively close. So how do you do that?
To live within four minutes, our policy states that it has to be four minutes with the fire chief driving that, following all applicable laws. So Google or Apple Maps may say you're within four minutes, but when we actually drive it, it may be a little bit longer. Typically, if it's kind of right on that border, it'll be driven multiple different times, different times of day, possibly different routes, to see if they actually do qualify for that four-minute route. And we're happy to do that if anyone's potentially interested and want to know if they are within that four minutes. Good question.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Quick question, and then we'll take our city clerk.
Oh, I was going to comment. I happened to be at Apple Valley Station 2, taking a tour at one time, and with the former chief, the phone rang. We were in front of the office, and the incoming calls came, and he said, watch this. He looked at his watch. Three and a half minutes later, a truck pulled out with 10 guys on it. I mean, it was phenomenal.
Impressive. Thank you. Christina.
Thank you, mayor and council. We currently have five continuing candidates. Cindy Dais, Nicole Farrelly, Angela Lauer Shappy? Shappy? Shappy, thank you. Jessica Merchant, and Hunter Verah. So typically, it would be four that we would then vote for on this round.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we vote for three.
Do we have a second for that? Second from, a motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Melander. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll vote for three.
Thank you. Up to three, don't forget your initials.
Thank you.
You?
I hope you prepared more.
We have a few more. We'll give you rounds as things. Next up, we'd like to call on our city engineer, Brandon Anderson, to talk to us about a project that we're doing jointly with Dakota County on Canal Road 31.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, the city of Apple Valley's been working with Dakota County on numerous roadway projects planned for the next several years. And we just want to let you and the general public to know that we're hosting another open house here at City Hall in the municipal center on March 11th from 4:00 to 6:00 with Dakota County staff and city staff. This one is regarding some safety improvements that the county is planning on Pilot Knob Road at Upper 147th Street. That is an intersection that's had some safety concerns and at high accident rates. It is a, I believe, a wonderful project. It would be great for the general public to show up and ask questions and get to know what the project's looking to head for. So initially, the open house will be March 11th. There is a project website on the Dakota County website, as well as a QR code, if you know how to use that, or you can enter and get more information. There'll be a spring open house, there'll be some final design, there will be two other open houses after that later in the year, and they're looking at a summer 2026 implementation or getting that project started. So just a little background information, we want to get some people more at community engagement events that are upcoming. So March 11th, 4:00 to 6:00, regarding a county project.
Thanks, Brandon. We should probably recognize your work in getting it this far. You've done a ton of work behind the scenes with the county and suggestions and sightlines, and, right, we've seen some of that come through in email and comments. And just want that to go on, recognize you've got a lot of work in helping get to what's probably a good outcome if we can get there.
Thank you. This will be an important safety project, one of the better ones. So thanks.
Thank you. All right, I'm talking slowly to see if the door opens.
We do have a few more if we want to...
Go ahead, yeah, let's keep going.
We'll call back up our police chief, Nick Francis, who wants to inform the community about an upcoming teen academy.
Fortunately, I can make this as long or as short as we need here. So it may not feel like it outside, but our teen academy is right around the corner. Starts in April. It will run Thursday nights, April 3rd through 24th. We just put it out online, put it out to our, all of our subscribers through email, and registration is open right now. So we're inviting students, preferably Apple Valley or 196. We are partnering again with the Rosemont Police Department. But it's a great way for kids that want to or even don't want to be in law enforcement just to get to know some of their police officers and get to know what we do for them in the community. So it'll be on social media, and we'd love to have our kids come out and see what we do.
And there is a limit to the number of attendees?
Yeah, usually, it's in the mid-20s. It's, we've had, we haven't really had waiting lists or anything else. We usually get right around there. So we're happy to have a full classroom.
Great, thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Christina.
Mayor and council, after round three of voting, we have three continuing candidates. Nicole Farrelly, Angela Lauer Shappy, and Jessica Merchant. So we would typically then vote for up to two on those ballots.
I think that works, don't you?
I'll make a motion for two.
Two? All right, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember, motion for Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Melander to vote for two. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We got a long way through this before somebody forgot.
You had to recognize handwriting.
All right, Tom, I'm sure we have more.
Well, I was hoping maybe we would forget this one, but we're going to go ahead and say it anyway, that tonight will be Alex Sharp's last meeting with the city of Apple Valley. Alex has been our city planner here for a while, and before that, a planner one who specialized in the economic development side of the community. He's done some amazing work for the city, and we're very sad to hear that he's accepted a position as the Community Development Director for the city of Wayzetta. So wanted to let the community know that, those of you who have processed various permits through our planning department over the course of past many years, probably dealt with Alex. He's always done amazing work for our community and on behalf of our residents and certainly our businesses in growing our tax base for the community. So just want to wish him well, and I probably stole all the thunder, but I'll ask Tim if he has anything left he'd like to comment as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in my short two-years tenure here, I've lost three city planners. I've always, I'm starting to wonder, is it me, or is it just something going on in the water? Two of those retirement, and one of them was a self-promotion by Alex. He has been a wonderful asset to this city and a great helper to me as I was starting to learn everything about this community and about the department, and he's been great to work with. And Wayzetta's gain is our loss, but we wish him well, and this is a more-than-logical step for an individual like Alex to start as a planner, move up to city planner, and transition to community development director. That's a track I took, and this is the track I encouraged him to take. So we're very happy for him, and we hope that he does stop in, and I hope to see him at some conferences, and he can buy my first drink at those conferences.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's true. So thank you, Alex. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. This deal, also, that's the Alex work stuff, right? I also know Alex has spent a fair amount of time in our local schools, helping get great high school students and others interested in the planning track and the municipal careers, and we need that to build that pipeline up. So Alex, thanks for that time as well. So we'll miss you. Christina.
Mayor and council, after round four of voting, we have two continuing candidates, Nicole Farrelly and Jessica Merchant. I will hand out the ballots. Please vote for one.
I'm going to initial it right away.
Thank you, good job.
Double-check, man. Make sure.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Tom, what else do we have?
One other, since we're maybe at the last round here. Just a reminder that over the course of the last year, the city council has worked with staff in the franchise fee development process. So many residents are aware that there's a franchise fee that is charged on your Dakota Electric bill that you get regularly from them. That basically is in recognition of the fact that the electric utility uses the public rights of way of our community for their infrastructure. As part of the renewal of the franchise agreement with Dakota Electric that was now put into place, Dakota Electric is sending out letters to all of the customers across the community. You may be seeing those in your mailbox and you may well get questions about that. We will be adding some information on our city website to describe more about the franchise fee process itself and happy to answer any questions that people have. The revenue raised from that fund has in the past and will continue to do various infrastructure projects for the city. We have buried electrical, overhead electrical lines to add greater reliability to our system. We have certainly have been looking and have been adding some of those dollars to assist with our street reconstruction projects, which is a major expense of our city as we work our way through our 50-year-plus infrastructure revenue from this particular franchise fee. We'll go to assist that as well. So we just want to get that information out there as much as we can, help to answer any questions that people have as they receive this letter in their mailbox and happy to have more conversation if they wish.
Great, thank you, Tom. Christina.
Mayor and city council, after round five of voting, Jessica Merchant received the majority of the votes of the city council. At this time, if you're so inclined, you could make a motion for a resolution appointing Jessica Merchant to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term expiring March 1st, 2026.
We have a motion to that effect.
So a motion, appointing Jessica Merchant to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
A motion from councilmember Grendel and Lisa, a motion, a second from councilmember Hebert. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you for all of our applicants. It's not often we get eight qualified applicants to show up for these and we're happy to do. We will have other openings. Those apps will stay on file. If you're interested in other things, please reach out, so thank you very much. Councilmember Hebert.
Again, I just wanted to say thank you. I had a opportunity to talk to everyone and again, the passion and the commitment and the excitement to get involved and step up, just really appreciate that and the amount of experience that everybody had and would bring to this role was really a tough decision I think we had to make, but I just again want to say thank you to all of you and continue to get involved and again, thank you for your interest.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Tom, do we have any other staff updates?
Mister Mayor, staff is officially out of updates.
All right, we'll start accumulating them again for next time. First part of February, we have been winter fest happen here and just want to recognize everybody who played a part in pulling that together, certainly a lot of works from parks, from other city staff, from even team on communications, from police, from fire. We had fire trucks out there, we had garden carts. I don't think we tipped anybody over, ran them over, I think we did it safely. We had a number of volunteers, we couldn't have pulled this off without community volunteers who showed up throughout the day and made sure everything was there and literally all had it cleaned up. Yes, we had the art, yes, live band, right? Hard to pull live music off in the winter. We had the Arts Foundation sponsor a, sponsor a live band out there and then we had, yep, Rotary, Rotary was there, food trucks, we had a couple food trucks out, Rotary was there selling hot chocolate. Rascals showed up to sell adult beverages. Turned out to be a nice evening, the wind probably wasn't in our favor, but what do you do in the winter? That's the whole purpose, right? We gotta celebrate no matter what the weather brings us, so thanks, everybody, for the work to pull that together. That's right, Act 227, yeah, 227 was out there helping. So I'm sure I forgot somebody, it's not because I intended to forget you, it's because we had a lot of people helping. Thank you all. Any other council comments? All right, the next item on our, excuse me, item on our agenda is to approve the calendar of upcoming events. Our next regular city council meeting is Thursday, February 27th at 7:00 p.m. And just a reminder that city offices are closed Monday, the 17th in observance of the President's Day holiday. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from councilmember Bergman, a second from councilmember Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item eight is to go into closed session and we're gonna be in a closed session under the attorney-client privilege, exception to the open meeting law, to review and consider real property appraisal information related to city-owned property located at the northwest corner of 150th Street West, County Road 42 and 147th Street West, commonly known as the Frazier Edition Remnant Parcel. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from councilmember Bergman and a second from councilmember Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We will hold that closed session across the hall and we'll adjourn the meeting from over there, so thank you.